Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
I have to call to order the meeting of Brooklyn's Select Board for Friday, February 7th, time is 6:31. First up is changes to the agenda, if any. I don't actually have any changes to the agenda. All right, moving right along. There are no unusual scheduled members of the public. There are no unscheduled members of the public. We will move on to approving the minutes from January 22nd, 2020. My agenda should have said, which I need to fix. Peter's not here, but I'll communicate to him the changes. The only thing I saw on page one was from my agenda from the last time, which was the minutes should have said from January 8th, 2020. Did anybody else have any changes on page one?
It'll be January, the 2019's wrong and the corrections were made. January 8th, 2019.
Okay. Anything else on page one?
Page one, where is that one about the? Oh, I think it's page two, Brooklyn.
I just need you to read it again and make sure I'm right. Are you all ready?
Okay, so moving on to page two. Something on page two of the guy's.
He's reading it quick first.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, any changes on page two then? Here and done any pages on page three. The only thing I saw were again a couple of 2019's. It should be 2020 under the set agenda and then under Peter's respectfully submitted. We'll change those to 2020. Anything else on page three?
Oh, forgot.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 22nd as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for January 22nd as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. Moving right along to the first item of new business, which is to approve the highway mileage statement. So annually, we have to complete and sign the certificate of highway mileage. Guy has completed the mileage. Nothing has changed about our mileage for any of our rates from last year to this year. So it's the same numbers. And that's basically it. Anything else to clarify about it?
No, you'll just sign on, I put an arrow we have to sign. And that's it. It gets submitted to the Vtrans. And that's to assure that we get the payments that are necessary for the mileage.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve and sign the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February 10th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving and signing the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February 10th, 2020 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. It looks like we need three signatures.
Yeah, so you can all take a look at it and.
So yeah, you guys can look at it as well. Okay, then moving on to the next item, which I'd like to suggest we limit ourselves to 10 minutes or so max to discuss this. But so it's discussion of the road equipment purchase next step. So the idea of this really is just to start to have discussion about, okay, what do we do now? Do we continue to have the advisory committee exist for them to look for other options? Or do we stop looking at options? What do we do?
I wasn't, I was under the impression that they were going to make a recommendation.
Well, that's, that's, I heard that before the meeting, which I didn't know previously. So it may well be that our discussion is to wait for the recommendation that comes from the committee.
Well, again, I apologize that we didn't get all this to you. I mean, I was away and then with weather and everything. We did have a meeting last night with myself, Mark and Doug. And then I spoke with Archie today. And he agrees with everything that we discussed last night. And so we feel that we have a recommendation to give to the board, which I can read. It's a short little piece right here.
Well, maybe what would be more sensible is for us to table this till the next meeting and that can be presented to us. And I guess we could also, if any of the meeting, if any of the members of committee wanted to attend for the follow-up discussion, that's something we could do.
We're not voting anything, would it hurt to just hear it?
Yeah, I would like to just push it out there.
Personally, I'd like to see something, I'd like to actually see it in writing.
Can you email that?
Yeah, absolutely.
But certainly, yeah, I mean, if you want.
Well, so we have a recommend, the recommendation, we have a two-part recommendation. And part of it, I think that we should bring up quickly so we can possibly start moving ahead on this. And so I'll just read what the recommendation in writing will be pending any changes. So we say, "The committee recommends a two-part plan moving forward. Foremost, this summer, the town should rent a machine that fits the parameters set down in the request for proposals. This will allow us to continue to gather data as well as test out the real-world validity of our predictions at the same time that we are getting work done. After this summer, if the board feels as though it is still to the benefit of the town to buy a machine, they should monitor the market for a suitable machine. If one is found, they should warn a special town meeting at the same time as starting a competitive bidding process. At that point, the town will make the final decision." And so.
So I guess, does the, does the machine that we've already have helped for us to use this summer for rental meet the criteria that the?
No, because that's a tractor.
Strictly your mowing machine does not meet our.
So then this would mean going and finding some different machine to rent for this summer than what we already planned on renting?
Yes, which we've already, one of the vendors that we've been in contact with when we were looking for proposals is a possible vendor for renting machine. And really everyone that we were in contact with has machines that fit our parameters for rental. And then as we saw, none of them really had a machine that was perfect for us for sale at that time, but for rental, they, they do.
Do you, did you get prices for the different rentals on these?
We, we don't have the exact prices at this moment. We were working on that.
Okay. Is that, so I guess that's a question, was the, yeah, so was the committee planning on finding rental prices for these things as part of the recommendation?
Well, we were gonna, we're gonna move forward to grab those prices because there's really no downside to having those prices. But, you know, at, at the same time as we're moving forward with those prices, we figured that we would alert the board as to what we're doing. And, you know, obviously, ultimate decision is pending the prices clearly. But there's no reason to, you know, hold back the information until we get the exact prices.
So the machine that I had found isn't even ever came in.
Well, so I have minutes here in the essence of time, but we're not going to discuss that in depth. But both of the machines you found don't fit the parameters that we had previously discussed. The Volvo is far too large, we believe, for the town's purposes. And then the other machine is just, well, it actually has far too many hours and it's just kind of a Franken machine.
Who was at the meeting?
Mark, myself and Doug. And then we, Mark and myself discussed this with Archie.
You agree with that, Mark?
Yeah, we, the four of us together back a couple meetings ago talked over, we looked up all the makes and certain makes of machines only make large machines.
I see.
And then there's one that's small that's a little bit too little for everyday needs. So we were looking right in the middle. And the machine in the middle has what they call a triple boom system. So when you're working, a two boom is folded up like an elbow. And you're always in jeopardy of catching the overhead wires. This new style of three boom keeps your elbow down so you're never in danger of swinging into the power wires.
Now you said new style. New style, how long do you think that's been out? How long it's gone?
I'm going to say within 10 years.
Okay, so it's newer style?
Newer style, yeah.
Okay.
And so we figured the weight limit, we're looking for something around the 20, 25,000 pound range. And that is because the machine that we're ideally in search of can sit in one lane and do all this work on the ditch side without blocking traffic. Thank you. If we get the large machine, you got, it's upping the wires.
So that Volvo was too much?
You gotta pick up the second lane to work on the ditch on the other side.
So that Volvo really didn't, it was a little too much?
Unfortunately, it's, yeah, we figure, it weighed almost 40,000 pounds. It's 38,000. So it's just a little too heavy for our little roads and a little bulky for, you know, convenience. And I've learned this by talking with other towns, surrounding towns. I talked to towns who have the smaller machines. I talked to towns who have the bigger machines. And even talking with the sales representative on some of the machines that we've checked into that are ideally, they've heard the same things I'm telling you about. Their machine either too big for their town or light duty and they struggle to get things done that they would like to do with it.
I'd like the discussion, I think we should continue it like you said. Move on over to next time and give us time, if you can send us all that information that you just read, then I can sit down and think about it and everybody else can sit down and think about it and we'll hash it out.
Continue this next.
Yeah, Shelby, any initial thoughts before we move on to that?
No, I think if the, I have an interest on it, I mean, we can talk about it more next time, but if the rental prices were similar and fit within the budget, I think that the plan to use a similar piece of equipment for the summer to see if it actually is going to work for us, you know, try it before you buy makes a lot of sense. So I think the recommendation makes sense at the front. It just depends if it fits the budget.
It will allow us to gather, Jose, data, you know, to help us with the purchase, see how much we actually use it, you know. Unfortunately, there'll be times where you assess because it's a hard time job, but we can still see how it operates, see what it can do.
And see how much you actually end up using it.
Right, to see if it's worth it.
That's, that's one of the big pieces is that if we rent a machine for a week or even two weeks, then Mark knows about that in advance and he shifts things around in his schedule so he gets the maximum hours out of that machine. But if we have a long-term rental, it's going to mimic owning a machine. And so Mark will, will use it as he would use a machine that we own.
It boils down to convenience by having a machine in town. When I'm on the roads doing my thing, I'm always making notes and I have a long list of things that have to be done at some point. But sometimes they linger and linger and linger until we do get a rented machine here. And then I try to run around and do all that. So by having a machine on hand, I just come to town, I know what I'm going to do, I go and do it, you know, another day, the same thing. So the large thing is just convenience of owning without having to line up, you know, another contractor to help me out and a truck and have everybody's schedules match for one day. It's a tough. Sure, when I'm not in town working, I kind of lose my page because I'm focused on what I'm doing on my other jobs of income that I have to do to make a.
As much as I made a phone call to JD of Adele, was it called again there?
Abel.
Abel, sorry. I need to call him back because I promised I respond back to him and I haven't done so. So I'm going to call back and tell him that we felt after all the considerations that the machine's a little too big. And if he can keep us in mind for something a little smaller, we would entertain the idea of renting it and/or buying.
Yeah, I did notice Bruce, they do have like a dozen of those machines. A lot of them are caterpillar, which are.
Too big.
And then they have a small one, which was a little too small. It weighed like 12,000 pounds. The one that we, we were initially going to buy is still on the website. And it's listed at 96,200. The pictures are all there and the price. I actually found it on two websites.
That was at Tarex.
One, one website had it for 147,000.
Adele? Adele?
It wasn't, it was through them, but it was listed on machinerytrader.com, a large, a huge equipment.
Maybe they just act, haven't updated their website.
So, yeah, I'm sure that's what it is. They haven't taken a picture off, but it still shows it as being available for 96.
I have a question for you quickly. Explain it to me again about the three sections, would you call it again?
That's where I found the equipment.
The three boom?
Oh, three boom.
Is that what you called it?
Yes, you have a short boom coming up about the height of the machine, a second boom going straight over, and then a third boom down to the bucket.
So ch, ch, ch.
So basically you run one boom with your foot forward and back, but the other two are the ones that are doing all the work. So it just keeps your center of gravity much lower and keeps you, you know.
Did that one that we ran last summer, did that happen?
It did.
Yeah, it's three boom.
That was a great feature. That's where I first, before this, I had no knowledge of it. So, yeah, that was a great feature.
A quick thought. Maybe when you contact them again, it might make more sense so there's less like of a ping pong of information if after you contact and say, "We're not interested, we'll keep this in mind in the future," to give him either maybe Mark or Joseph's information who have like worked really hard on defining the specs of what this, and just seem to have more hands-on intimate knowledge of like what it would be.
What you're talking about is the specs.
Yeah, so having him say, you know, leave them, leave him with one of their contact information or both say, "These would be the people that you'd like to reach out to." Because then it doesn't have to kind of go around so much. You can go directly to the people who really have the. Yeah, and I mean, it's like, I wouldn't be able to talk to him. I'd be like, "Oh, that sounds wonderful."
I have an idea.
Unless you do this every day, you know, you're learning something every phone call or every time you.
All right, to be continued.
You gotta get rest.
Also, I just have three quick things. On your point, also in respect to Abel and JD, he's heard from like four or five of us from the town in Brooklyn now. And we haven't bought anything from him. So we should not try to stress our relationship with him.
You're absolutely right.
The other two things that I have is in concern, so like the machine being too large and any of that, we, the request for proposal that we put out has all of the specifications that although are not set in stone, we spent a long time figuring out what was going to work for the town. So if you just go by those specs that we put out earlier, it's pretty easy to see what machines don't meet those specs and should probably be giving less consideration.
Other stuff.
Yeah, then that has like the weights, the hours, and some of the features that are required. And although it's not, you know, a tablet of stone, it's a pretty good go-by. And then the last thing that I had to say, which you wanted to kind of start the conversation on this tone was what should the committee be doing? Like, should we continue the conversation as the committee is concerned? We were thinking that if we go ahead and rent a machine for this summer, that the committee should probably meet again at the conclusion of renting that machine to go over Mark's thoughts and consider all of the board's thoughts. But in the meantime, over the course of the summer, we don't necessarily think that it's necessary for the committee to continue meeting.
But you'll still exist. So if something comes up and you're like, "Hey, actually, you know, we really want this thing happening." You're, you're still a thing, but maybe not meaning to make it.
That was an expectation, you're doing anything until that's the.
Exactly, that was our issue. We just wanted to cover.
Just like I responded, it's the point that you were making about too many peas in a pod, basically. That's accurate. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call back and give him the contact information and show him kind of what we're looking for. But the point I'm making is that it's a big place. They've got a lot of turnover stuff with what appeared BMA. So remembering when I was in sales and I was on the reverse, it was like, it was kind of nice if the customer once in a while just said, "Hey, you know, I'm still interested." I'm not saying bad room once a week or whatever.
Yeah, and I'm not saying you did that.
No, no, I know that. But I'm saying we should, I like your idea where the person on the committee or Mark, who's on the committee, that's able to communicate a little more knowledgeable than I would be as far as equipment, keeps in contact with that person, JD. Because you never know, something could come up March 15th, you never know. It's a busy place. They have a lot of equipment and it would be nice to get something like we saw last summer, like you saw this summer. And that's in their mind, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're learning a lot, you know, just looking for machines. And there are new machines being made that are coming out from other countries that fit our parameters ideally, but they're not available over here. Seems like overseas, there's much more choices in our parameters to choose from, but that's beyond our looking. But at the same time, we're looking for a machine, because it was brought up, we're comparing the prices to the years of the machines and how many hours on the machines and the availability of parts and service. That's a huge important.
Right, keep going back to the original discussion of making sure we cover all our bases.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's big.
That's important.
Okay, all right. So we'll put that back on the agenda for the 20 seconds.
By then, we'll have some prices for leasing, renting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And fees for what we'd like to get and everything.
Yeah. That sounds good. All right, moving on to C, which is 2020 town appointed positions. So I just want to start to get us thinking about appointed physicians because for those of, well, you'll remember from last year, that basically we'll have town meeting on the 2nd and then on the 4th, we will have a reorganization meeting at which we will appoint people to all the various positions that we point. So usually what we do is in advance of that, speak with the people who are currently doing the role to hopefully ensure that they're, yeah, speak, beg, whatever it is. So what I thought we could maybe quickly do is just kind of run down a list of this and maybe split up who's going to talk to who, because I can't talk to all these people.
Oh, come on. Do you want a photocopy?
Uh, yeah, nobody has a, yeah.
Is that going to be all right, Mark?
Yes, yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. I just needed something.
Well, I made you three copies in case.
Okay.
Someone steals one from you.
It was good.
That's all that looks good.
Yes.
Till the guy sports car over passing the winter.
Actually twice. I came over Mackenzie and then back over there.
Okay, so just running down the list. So things like assistant town clerk is a position that is appointed by the town clerk, not by the select board. Same with assistant treasurer, that's a point, those are appointed by the treasurer, not by us. Road commissioner, I am going to speak again with Archie and make sure that he, I think he was also going to have a little conversation with Tom, just to make sure they're square on comfort level.
We don't know where he is headed with this, with that here.
I, last he and I spoke, he was into it. He just kind of, you know, he just wanted to, didn't want to step on toes of anyone else. So I'll follow up with him again on that. Highway supervisor, I think we can be hopeful that Mark is interested in continuing in that role.
Yeah, I would be on board with that.
Health officer and assistant health officer are. Yeah, and I need to, I need to follow up with Dot because we have some paperwork that we need to do to make sure that is all official, actually.
So she's staying?
Yes, I think she's, I think she's willing to continue as long as she has someone to assist her.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that's, there was going to be a plan of, I mean, I don't know if you've gotten any farther of defining what the role was.
No, not really. I mean, a lot of this is discretionary, a little bit town-to-town, like, you know, how we, you know, how we handle situations, so.
I mean, unfortunately, the state, if in the lack of someone being in the role of the state has a name, I'm now the official health officer because I have no choice. But Dot and I have discussed her doing it and me assisting her in some fashion, so we'll figure that out. Fire warden, Lester Rink.
State, the, the state.
Yeah, the state does that now.
State appointed?
Yep. They've always had. Yep.
Do they do the deputy as well?
I believe so. Yes, they did. They did both the deputy and the.
Surveyor for wooden lumber? They don't have that anymore, do they?
No, the lumber I don't think is there anymore, but the tree warden is.
So is there, is there really no longer a surveyor of wooden lumber?
No, not that I know of.
I thought that was discontinued.
Yeah.
We left it on because we weren't sure.
Well, it'll, it'll be in this town report because I left it in because no one told me that.
Well, we weren't sure.
Tree warden, Mark, are you willing to continue as tree warden? We took care of that.
I received an email where there's the state is just.
Yeah, they're gonna change something about it.
Statues to report to the tree ward.
Wyndham Regional Commissioners, I mean, we have listed still Cynthia as well as you, but am I correct that Cynthia hasn't actually been doing anything?
And I will continue to.
So is it in our best interest to try to find someone else to also be?
I would think so, you know. I mean, it require, you know, they, each town gets two. If they only have one, that's fine too, but, you know, it's, it would be nice to have two.
And what is that exactly?
Pardon me?
What exactly is the position? Like what is it?
You go to meetings, you serve on committees. Basically, it's for the regional planning, so forth. If you go on the website, if you just go to Wyndham Regional Commission, there's a whole printout of what your expectations are, what you do and so forth. To list them, it would take me a while, but it's a good thing.
And it's, it's not a meeting every month, it's.
Yeah, once a month they have a meeting, but sometimes they, you know, they cancel them in the summer. But basically, it's a once a month meeting for about two hours and they hold them in different places in the area, different towns.
Okay, so we'll mull over if we could find someone else to join Guy on that. Pound keeper, we basically always point the Humane Society. Animal control officer, all talk to Dot. Again, about that, I mean, as far as I'm aware, she's willing to continue to do it. I will say it is another position that I think she would really like to have some kind of assistance with.
Yeah, that's a point, you know.
So.
Maybe we should consider an assistant animal control officer, or is that not a good idea?
Uh, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think that struggle would be finding someone that's willing to do that. I think we should. I I think it would be good if we could do it. We just we have to find.
Is Nancy Ludwig totally out of that?
Yeah, because she's not she's not here year round.
Oh, okay.
Right now, she's in Florida.
Five months a year now.
Six.
Yeah, so. And I I'll say for now, I don't think Nancy's interested, wouldn't be interested in doing it anyway.
No, she quit.
She spent several years doing it and I think she's probably not interested anymore.
So we should keep our ears open if maybe somebody would be interested in helping that.
Yes, yeah. I think that it would be that would be a really good thing for both the position and the town if we could have another person involved in that. It did when Nancy was animal control officer and Dot was assistant animal control officer, it did help the situation greatly.
Yeah.
Because it just gives another person to be able to help out with things and another resource.
Maybe Dot has some ideas, too?
Uh, yeah, I will ask her. I'm not sure if she knows, but she might. Not sure. Um historical society.
Jack Green's gone.
Jack Green is gone.
Where did he go?
Moved out of town.
Oh.
Moved to Bravo.
Bye, Jack.
Um.
Joseph.
Yeah, I thought that I was.
You're thinking about it.
I thought that I was on that already. We had.
Uh, what do you think about? Doug is, but I don't know.
I know. I know that we had.
I think there was some talk about it.
Not that meeting we voted on something.
Yeah. I I mean, I'll I'll be on that uh.
So we can appoint you in on our on our.
Yeah. On what on what to do that.
Okay, so far so good.
More closely on both of them.
Um, so then could I ask, uh, would you reach out? Yeah, so you'll reach out to both of them to see if they're interested in continuing?
Yeah.
Cuz well, I'm not sure about Cynthia because her health isn't as been as good as it has been in the past.
I'll I'll talk to her, but I I believe she's still interested.
Yeah, okay.
In this, in the world.
Yeah, she will not get both died on. Not a chance.
Um, emergency management coordinators.
That was Fontaine, Mike Fontaine and Mike Whynot?
Yeah, there's someone I don't know. There's gotta somebody who does wanna reach out to them to see if.
I had Mike's phone number. I'll try to contact Mike. I can control. I can contact both of them.
Can you contact both of them?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I I can. I had Mike's phone number. Oh, fine. I'll find it. It's not good.
Uh, I mean, I know the last time Dot talked to them, they were both willing to continue. I don't know.
Suburbanous management.
Hope that they will because someone can talk to them. Um, Georgia Dana for Rescue Inc. I'm happy to reach out to Georgia to confirm if she's willing to continue. Guy, are you willing to continue as our town nine one one coordinator?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, SEVCA has been vacant for as long as I've been involved with this town.
Where's the information on what that is? I think that role does. Do we even know anymore?
Uh, I have no idea.
That's Southeastern Vermont Community Action.
Yeah, I know SEVCA. I just don't like the role. What does it do?
Uh, I guess it helps people that are in dire straits. Uh, again, on the website, there's a.
It's a representative to their board who's.
Yeah.
And so maybe monthly.
If you look on the website, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's all within. Well, I'm thinking with any of these that we're really iffy about or that we know we're gonna have to find things for, it might be nice to have information handy at town meeting day so we can kinda filter it out. So we're kinda anyone who maybe we wouldn't have thought of or we don't know, but who hopefully does attend, we can have that information available. So at town meeting day, they could let us know by the end of the night if they're interested and we'll, you know, take it into consideration before the reorganization.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, if you could pull that.
So I, yeah, so I'm writing down which ones we've kinda got the iffy about and I'll find information and get it available for the meeting.
Cool. Thank you. Um Wyndham Solid Waste. I know at one point I said I was giving it a dime, but now I'll stick with it because we've started this different thing. So I'll continue to do that. Um, the planning commission, Charlie's terms up.
Tom, Barbara Born, Charlie.
Well, yeah, but the only but there those the planning commission actually has five year terms. So it's there's only one term that's actually up this year, which is Charlie to see if he goes.
And there's a vacant one cracked, it looks like.
And there's still a vacant one, yes.
If someone showed up and was interested. Okay, cool.
Um, I will reach out to Charlie to see if he's willing to continue. Um, and then the Brookline Meeting House are all just year to year. Uh, I will say, and I have it in correspondence, that Sarah has resigned from the meeting house.
Oh, she said that?
Um, yeah, she just did yesterday.
Too many things on the plate she said.
But luckily that still leaves us with six people on that committee currently. Um, uh, I am certainly happy to ask. Actually, I'll reach out to all these people. It'll be easier. Mark, are you interested in continuing on the meeting house committee?
Yes, I I still have interest.
Um, and I can reach out to the others.
And that one, if we don't fill it, it's not the end of the world. But if somebody is at a town meeting day and we're able to spark their interest in it, we can.
Yeah, I mean, we've historically, for a long time, there were only three members on the committee. It's just this past year that it's expanded. Um, and we've just kind of continued to add people. We don't really have a defined number.
On the committee.
On the committee, so it can fluctuate, but um.
As long as you have at least three to make decisions.
Yes, yeah. Right. Um, okay, cool. So, yeah, if we can all kind of start making headway with those. All right, moving on to old business. First up is uh Suzie's Little Peanuts building update.
Okay. All right, here we go.
Moving so quickly, I know we're gonna keep moving quick.
You're exactly right. Okay, first up, I recontacted Norm Holden. He was in Florida. Should've come back yesterday. I talked to Jesse's son. And the reason why I called his son to find out when he's going back so I could talk to him more specifically, but I wanted to let him know that the bid was awarded because they had no idea, one. And two, I had one issue that I've been contending with since we began the bid process before it when I was talking to the separate painters. And that was my feeling of which way to go with oil-based primer or water-based or latex primer. So my good old man Ron Hazelton, which you guys probably don't know who that is, is like on a syndicated program on TV that the carpenter is absolutely outstanding. It's kind of comparable to this old house. Kinda sealed it for me. And he made the comment on old wood and he was painting windows. He was finishing all windows. You should have oil-based primer. And he's kinda concurring with Mohammed, who is very strong on it. So I asked Jesse, I said, is that gonna be a problem? Because they wanted to latex prime. He said, no. So that's the way it's gonna be done. And oil primer windows are not have any, you know, like differences. It takes twenty-four hours for the oil-based primer to to dry rather than latex, an hour to then ready to go. But considering the age of the woods, it's pretty quick.
Is that gonna change anything about Norm's price?
No, no. Would it be like if you use a gallon of paint? It was just paint on on those windows for the amount that? No, we should not change it at all. If if he shows some resistance, I'll let him know. But I doubt it because Jesse said, no, it's not a problem. Okay, then that's that. Then after last meeting, Mark called me up after after meeting when I got home and he went over to Suzie's to read the meter. And he noticed two things. He noticed that the meter couldn't be read in that it was the same meter reading as the last time he was there.
Ooh.
And the vent to the to the gas furnace, you know, little flaps that open up to let the let to give air when 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 the when burners um could uh get hot. So I went over to the station and looked at it and heard what he had to say. He's actually accurate in both regards. So at that point, I called Jeffers because they hadn't called me back. I had wanted to have a meeting with Joey Jeffers to to analyze all the different panels in there because there's too much going on. But the first thing I noticed when I went in there, as you walk into the left side, this is a panel that was opened up that looks like controls the carbon monoxide detector in there. So I'll let you all take a look at that.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
That's.
And if you look really closely, you'll see on the back of the panel there, the piece had kinda broken or was ripped off of it. I don't know. I've never seen that panel open. I've been in that furnace for plenty of times. I'll address that in a second. The second thing I noticed, I didn't notice, Joey Jeffers noticed because he came when he came in and met with me the following week. Um, it's not before I know Scott Boba. It's before I know Scott Scott Boba. And he noticed that the valves going to the meter were the supply line valves in and out of the meter, water going in and out. They were they were not like some were open, some were closed. Did you tell me that or did?
Well, that's my assumption of what.
You were right.
Maybe was wrong, but I I didn't wanna move nothing without creating something. I thought you knew what was going on.
You were right. Now I remember exactly. You were right. And Joey Jeffers straightened it out. And then I had Scott Boba come in after to discuss some things with him and with me after I had met with Joey Jeffers. Uh, because the whole idea of the meeting with Joey Jeffers was to um straighten out this thing about the the air vent, which he did. Question?
No, I'm just I'm just trying to figure this out.
Okay, now as you walk into the boiler room, the boiler's in front of you, the panel that you're talking to is at the left.
Okay.
Next to the left, next to it is the is the pressure tank and then you have the hot water heater, the gas hot water heater. On the side where the door is to the to the bulkhead, it's up next to where the vent is. Next to that vent is a sensor. That sensor was basically set a little too cold, which was the reason why last September, when we had a sixty-five degree day, it tripped off it and kept the thermostat from from heating. And that's why they closed. That's been straightened out. Part of my visit with Joey Jeffers was to understand everything and everyone of those panels in there, which I did. I have other pictures, but I didn't bring them because I didn't think it was expedient and necessary. The other two, one was runs right behind the boiler and that's for the HRV system. Looks like a big timer and you can't miss it. Says, all right, it says a date and it says a time or or and you just set to what it's supposed to be. What happened? That's just basically, that's not gonna stop the heater. That just has to do with the air ventilation system. That has to be set every time you have a power outage or you unhook it down. Okay, then lastly, to the left of the boiler, behind the Gornflecks pumps against the wall are two, I forget you call them relays, that are set at different degrees and they control the heat to the old building and to the new building. And they're set at a different temperature. And the way, if I got this right, the way it was explained to me, if I got it right, is that it prevents it prevents both halves of the boiler coming on. So given the temperature, it'll kick on the second one if it's needed. Okay? Now, if one isn't working or if they're not working, there's a reset button. I just run those. I know what that is now. I've taken pictures of them all. I'm gonna make a display or or notes or whatever for that room. So five years from now, seven, ten years from now, a person can refer to it. It's pretty easy. It's fairly cut and dried. Just a reset button, push it like that, re-trips it. Doesn't work, you need a relay. It's that simple. Okay, now let me see. So we got the the vent stocks right now. I'll just basically hold on. I did ask, so Joey Jeffers answered all my questions about the panels. He left, hit us a hundred and eighty dollar bill for one hour. Phew, they're brutal. But anyway, so I moved on and I called Scott Boba. Scott Boba came in and I discussed him further with the fed about the piping with respect to the to the meter. And he said, and we both, he did some tests, turned the water on, the more there's a little dial on it. Do I take the issue with that?
Yeah.
There's a little dial on the meter. It's right. I don't quite see it. It's right here. And he ran it on and ran. The door's open. And the the digits weren't changing and I followed up and told him that if he didn't, if I didn't call him the next day to replace it. Because Mark's gotta report to the state what the meter reading is.
Right.
So I did go there the next day. The meter did not change. That's a three hundred dollar similar piece of equipment plus whatever label you get for that. I was really ecstatic about that. Okay, so let me see. I think that's all.
So Scott's gonna or has replaced that at this point or?
I had a recontact him, but I told him to flat out. You don't hear from me to replace it because we can't mess around.
But was the actual problem lack of water flow or?
I approached that to him and we weren't really sure.
Yeah.
Um, he said he just replaced one. Did he say towns down in the country? I think he said in town someplace he just, cuz I asked him what it cost. And he said, we just replaced one. It's like three hundred buck piece of equipment right there. And.
But even after opening, what might have been closed incorrectly, the meter still didn't work?
Yeah. No, everything was working right when uh when Scott came there. He checked the supply lines going to the water system. The way Joey Jeffers reopened everything up, it was correct. So Scott Boba came in and after he said, oh, this is right. This is right now. Because I told him that. Okay, and then I asked him that question.
Because there are some bypass pipes that can change the logic.
Yeah, correct.
I was I wasn't sure somebody get that and.
Sure.
Didn't write them the right valve back up.
Right. And there's also a line that goes to the school. I mean, to the church. And we made sure that 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 was a screw. But that's all we need to do is have that water cord out.
Please don't.
Need that. Okay, so Scott's gonna replace it. I told him to do it if he didn't hear from me. Um, I'll be in there pretty soon, I'm sure, checking things out. If it hasn't been changed, I'll I'll bug him some more. But you know how to bug Scott Boba. He's a A++ dude. Uh, okay, let me see. Okay, now, just a couple of things. When I was with Joey Jeffers, I talked to him if he knew anything about the ventilators that we talked about last time. Remember I had the rod over the one that we fixed? I don't know if you remember all that. Here's a picture. I didn't have my tablet at the time, but this is what it looked like, just to give you, to show you what it looked like. Go, turn around. Turn around.
Is it gonna greatly change?
Keep going, keep going. Nice.
So these ventilators, they draw moisture out of the building up over the basement's ceiling.
Yes, there's two switches. Oh, stop laughing at me.
I can't help it.
I just wanted to show you. I wanted to show you. What I wanted to show you though is the rock in the stud, especially on the left hand side, that um that Dave had to cut it out. You know, I look at them. He had to half cut it out. What I'm trying to do is eliminate that from happening again. The two switches that control that, which are never being amused, are next to the each door covered in electrical tape. So then I talked to Joey Jeffers about just to see, cuz I had, somebody made a point, maybe it was Jeffers had stole all this crap in that building. And he said, no, they didn't. Then we talked about the humidity and he suggests that we have a humid stat foot in each door, which will automatically open, turn that turn that ventilator on as it's needed rather than, oh, Jesus, it's the middle of July, I gotta turn the switch on. Why they made that manual, who knows? So I'm going, I've already talked to Holly Meyer, Peter Myers' wife of the Grace Company. I'm gonna call Peter and see if he can help me, see if he can take some money. If he won't, we'll buy the parts and see if he can get that done. And also that issue that I never finished with, which was that pump for the sink uh for the bathroom downstairs. I want him to look at that relay panel because it was corroding. And I could do it, but I don't wanna do it. I want I want somebody to electric.
No, if we can have Peter look at it, that's good.
Let him do that. Let him look at, see what he says about humid stats and find out why we have the lights in the back. I think it's a sensor. I started to take it apart. So that's it. Um, I think that's all.
So in summary.
In summary.
Two things are broken. You had them fixed. They cost four hundred and eighty dollars total and you found two new improvement projects.
Not yet. Not yet.
But that that whole sentence, that in summary covers what you just said, right?
No.
No. Okay.
It's more than that.
Okay, just sorry.
Just catching up some.
Yeah, I am.
No, because we have a couple labor bill on changing the.
So it could be more. Okay, cool. Good to know.
Good to know. Okay, how much your point is, but I just.
The, the air vents for the furnace, it was stuck open, and it was just out of adjustment?
The way he explained to me, it was just hanging up.
Hanging up, okay, that's a new motor.
Yes.
And is there a possibility we thought that it could stay closed?
Of course it's a possibility, but I asked Scott Bogvat, I don't like that idea at all. And he said, "Don't worry about it, it's not going to cause problems."
Okay.
In case he, I'm going to talk about terms of carbon dioxide or whatever. It shouldn't be a problem. I'm going to keep a little bit of an eye on it once in a while, if it doesn't, you will see what's going on there. It's an antiquated setup.
It cycles every time the furnace is hung up, and it usually always kicks on once while I'm in there, so.
I should have been more thorough by asking him why it hung up. I guess I was going to be getting a little crazy about it, maybe a little grease in the pin or something, I don't know. I didn't mess with it, he said he straightened it out, so I didn't.
I felt that the room's usually fairly warm, the furnace room, and that particular night, I went in, going in the dark, and then turned the light switch on, and I, I felt it was a little cool in there. So, while I was looking at the meter, furnace kicked on, and I noticed they were already open.
Oh, right.
So, I waited for it to shut off, and they didn't close up. So I waited a second time, didn't move again, so. Figured it might be an issue.
Yep, without a doubt, you caught it.
Yeah, thanks for noticing.
That was great.
Sure.
I guess that's it for me. Why don't you all have it?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 7B, town meeting. I think this was just a chance to kind of touch base and see where, if there are any updates on like, the potluck organization, or communicating anything additional.
You said you were going to reach out to?
Sarah.
Why are you shaking your head at me? It's literally the minute.
To who?
Sarah. Sarah, about the potluck. Yeah, you said you had her email, you said you were going to reach out.
I thought we changed something in that.
Yeah, I think after that, well, we changed and decided that you guys were going to coordinate them.
Coordinate with eating stuff, but he said, "I have her email," yeah, and the food. But he was going to reach out, I, I was waiting for you to reach out to Sarah, because I don't have her information. So you were either, I either need her email, or I thought you were still going to reach out to her and say, can you, like, do you have a list of people or something? I thought we were like, overall coordinating, but I was still waiting on that. But we're still plenty of time, so just, I need her, is she using a treasure email right now?
No.
Okay, so I need her.
No, she's not, this is a different Sarah.
Oh, different, oh, that, that, no, they're wrong, Sam would be the wrong contact to the wrong person. Yeah, then I just need her email.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, and then I'll just reach out there.
I don't believe I have her email, but I have Chris's.
Or Chris's, however, because I don't know.
They're also on Facebook too, Sarah and Chris Webb.
I think also, yeah, Facebook stalk them and send them private messages from some of them.
So the Russians.
So there's this under Sarah, and it's all Sarah and Chris Webb.
All joint Facebook accounts.
Yes.
And then I did make up a little flyer to try and post around and get people to know. And I also have been seeing people around and telling them, reminding them about the time change, and everyone's like, "What?"
Since you brought it up, you guys aren't going to like this idea, but I'm going to bring it out back. So we can tell you that Dave's getting all worried. I was thinking about.
I don't like most of the ideas. And those are the ones that you think I might like. What might come out of your mouth when you say we're not going to like it? Tailorize it. Go ahead, please.
Let me ask, we have to, we have to send out the town books two weeks in advance, right?
Those are all done.
Or you have.
Yep, they're being mailed Monday.
Oh, okay.
So they're, they're already, they're in the process of being printed, no changes.
I was going to, I was going to put a flyer in with an explanation about the decision for the.
We can't put a flyer in anyway.
Because they mail them out.
Well, and then, I mean, what I'd say is, if we put a flyer in, we'd have to do a tab to close it, which would considerably drive up the price of it.
No, forget it.
No.
See, he didn't like your idea.
I'm just.
But that doesn't. I will say, because I'm sure everyone read it, that I did make mention of the new change, and select board report, and, you know, it's, I mean, and we'll communicate it other ways, so.
Yeah, and that was kind of bad too. So I made the, a flyer, and I can email it to you guys if you want to see it. It's, it's nothing crazy, I didn't have much creativity.
I think it's a good flyer.
Okay, it's a good flyer. Not only that, it's worth it.
It'll fly.
It'll fly. Yeah, so anyway, so I'm going to, I, I can print off some copies and drop them off, would that be helpful?
Yeah, that'd be great, I'm sure we can, since it's official town business, we can probably.
Oh, no, you're, he's there.
I don't think.
No, the guy says no.
I have a printer at home too, I'm over.
No, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
So I can definitely, I'll email it to you, we'll email it to everyone, but then that way, if you want to post it, maybe here, just, it's in addition, obviously it's not the official warning, or anything, just in addition, maybe a little bit eye catch here, because it's not your normal kind of, you know, so.
Can you, can you put that in the special events on the very front page of the website? Don't you have a?
Yeah, yeah, for the news.
And do you?
Yeah, news events.
I can send it to you as a JPG or PDF, if that helps.
I need a PDF, but I can, you know, I can change the file, but whatever, yeah, when I see it, I'll see how it fits in the website. And then we can maybe print up a couple hundred copies, and Bruce can go door to door and knock them.
I think that's a good idea. When they send it to us. And then I was also going to just put the information on Front Row Forum in a little bit. I might wait till two weeks before the meeting, it's a little soon, I think. Takes a day or two for them to populate it, depending on how many, how much information, but I think that's a good two-week out thing. And then I don't have a lot of friends in, on my Facebook who live in Brookline, but I have enough of them, that I was just going to create an event just myself, just as a, and then share, invite all the people who I am friends with in Brookline, and have like, and just encourage them to.
Just have it share a whole folder, if we should, we can share it.
Yeah, and then you can invite everyone else you know in Brookline. Just because like, who knows if they are going to create the town.
Ask me to be a friend, I'll be your friend.
Okay, I'll, I'll be your friend, and I will, but that, so I will, I'm going to start that soon, then I'll probably start that this weekend, and give that a little bit of time to disseminate, because like I said, I don't actually know a lot of people.
Now, is there any, is there, are you going to ask people to, to give a contact for people to let you know what they can bring?
Yeah, on the flyer, I did put my cell phone number and my email. And so I'll put that information in the Facebook event as well, just regarding the potluck.
So I know what I'm bringing, so do you want me to, to let you know now, or?
You can let me know now, or you can let me know.
I'll let you know.
We'll, we'll be Facebook friends soon, so you can message me, you can put in a post, however you want to do it. So we'll have the Facebook thing going around, we'll have Front Row for about two. The, the Front Row from August, about two weeks out, and then flyers can go up over the course of this week.
And then have Julie posted it again? I know she's posted a one, but maybe, you know, she can do that more than, you know.
Somebody give me Julie's contact information.
I don't know.
Is she online, is she on our website?
You don't get her?
Julie's. With Ser, she did.
You're not on the list, sir?
No, I think it's this weird thing that's not attached to us.
It's a board in the town report, and it'll address, I mean, it's, I think it's just JulieLavornia@gmail.com.
I have an address inside, I'll give you a.
Should the lister for the town be something that the select board has?
No.
Because you asked her to do it.
She does, she, she took over that.
So at the same time, you're asking her to add some to the, say, "Put me on your lister list," and that way you'll get, you're getting, you know.
So that's the emails we give people, if they were like, "Why don't I get that thing?" You would tell them Julie's email, okay.
Yes, you need to give her.
Yeah, I mean, it's an, it's an info, it's an info, you know, it's like a report form, it's not a.
We don't, we don't really have a mailing list. A person in town collects emails for other town people, and we ask, we use her list, kind of thing. Okay, I was thinking it was more like our list, but then we didn't really have access to it, and it was like a little bit like a two-step process. Okay, cool, so it's sort of like a guerrilla town, Brookline Underground Email List.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah, I don't know if any towns would actually have their own administrative email list.
Well, and that's what, I wasn't sure, you guys kept referencing the lister, so I was like, what is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Okay, cool, so yeah, I will send her the flyer, and she can just, I made a mail do it in a JPG, so it's in the body of the flyer, and she can order it, so it's just a visual.
And ask her to put you on the list, that way you'll get any notice in the future.
I know, I never get that, and Joseph doesn't either.
Well, he asked me to ask her to be on it.
Do you need one, Joe? Joseph?
Yeah, I'll grab one afterwards.
Okay.
Also, I'm also going to, we're all set as far as accessibility, getting in there. One thing, I could not get straight to last year for, last year's town meeting last March, is a damn thermostat, that thing is weird, so I'm going to go over that with, and make sure we have heat this year, because it wasn't working.
Now, can you, could check and make sure that we can use that kitchen sink to fill our coffee pot?
You're talking about the one upstairs?
One upstairs. There is no sink downstairs to fill up the coffee pot?
Yes, there is.
No, when we turned it on, it was, it was.
Now, the utility sink doesn't have.
It was disgusting.
Working, it was working the other day.
Was it?
I'm not talking about utility sink next to the bathroom, I'm talking about that one into the, into the, into the.
The one in the boiler.
Where we cleaned out everything.
Because when we, it wasn't working when, so we just filled, took the pot upstairs to fill it up.
Underneath, behind the furnace.
You can show me.
Just double-check it, I'm sure it is.
Check, make sure that it's good water.
You can do that, I think people probably were right, I think.
But it doesn't matter, we can use it anyway. I use it.
Yeah, she let me use the sink upstairs.
Plus, we're only having de-cap, because we don't want everyone all riled up.
You look lucky.
I don't drink.
So those are my thoughts about, and I, so I don't know if you had any other thoughts about things that we should be doing leading up to our meeting today, but those, that was kind of my plan of the town.
I only have one, one question. I assume, Guy, you put up the sign at some point with the town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Depending on the weather, yeah, if there's, you know, I usually put the sandwich board out by the thing. And plus, I'm hoping to have a conversation with Bob Ordet, do a little interview, and that'll go into the reformer, and see if we can get one in a comment also. But I didn't want to do it until maybe a week, 10 days before the event, because people will forget about it.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, I thought you did, I just couldn't remember.
And we can't forget to notify our legislators, and.
He, he sent an email, and she said that they have to work out something, because there's another town meeting, some other town.
Right, I notified him, but they said they would work something out, they do Bellows Falls.
But they didn't give him any information, but what time.
It's Scott Drogasnik.
I can reach out to him if nobody else has yet.
Great, all right, thanks everybody, thanks Shelby for all that stuff, that sounds really good.
If anybody else comes up with any ideas, maybe people.
Okay, 7C, the town report, it's going in the mail on Monday. It's going to be mailed standard, rather than first class, so we'll save a little bit of money that way. It'll take a little longer to get to people, but we should be, we should have enough time to get to them.
What is it, two weeks, Ben, we're supposed to have it, it's in the two weeks, and we have to have it to the people?
It's got to be, it's got to be mailed by the 22nd. Well, actually, actually, for us, it has to be the 21st, because our town meeting is on the 2nd.
Yeah, right, I mean, this, this, people are supposed to have it. Or, it depends on how you read the interpretation of it, but we tend to interpret that really people should ideally have it by, by the 21st.
Well, you're way ahead of that, right?
10 days before the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, what I'll say is, I only got it to them on Monday, and they've basically, they're finishing printing it over the weekend, and in part because I was encouraged, I, I told them I really ideally wanted to mail it standard, so that it would be $150 cheaper to mail than first class. So, they've done, RC Brayshaw is doing it, they've done a really good job, and they've turned it around really quickly. So yeah, the plan is for it to mail Monday, and then, you know, you don't really have any guarantees with the postal service, but I'd be, would be pretty confident that most everybody will get it the week of the 7th.
Who's going to mail it?
Well, the thing is, is that when you mail something standard like that, technically the post office says it might take seven to 10 business days. In reality, it's unlikely that it would take that long, but technically it could.
You've got that with you.
And they also, if the post office is busy, they let those things sit on their mail while they process first-class mail, so it's a little, it's, it's not a guaranteed thing, but we're far enough ahead that we should be able to, it should work and save us money. We'll see.
Are we putting the postage on, or is the printer putting the postage?
They're doing it, they do it under their Indesha thing, so they, and they drop it at White River Junction, wherever the nearest thing is. So anyway, so that should, that's basically all set at this point. Moving on to D, the Wyndham Regional Broadband Project. I was supposed, we were supposed to have a meeting last night, but it was postponed because of the weather till next Thursday night, so that it conflicts with a different meeting. But I, in theory, we're supposed to figure out at that point the survey, where the, what the link is to the survey, they're going to print, or give me some copies to make. We're going to end up putting copies of the survey here, as well as probably putting links on the website. I'll probably have a town meeting, and basically just try to drum up people, as many people as we can to fill out the survey, basically, and then we'll see what happens from there. But nothing has moved on it since last time, because the meeting was postponed. Okay, Mr. Tanzad, what's going on?
We're still processing, you know, elections, information, absentee ballots, and people registering. Basically, it's been, it's been busy, a lot of people, this is the time of year, when they do taxes, and they, the phone doesn't stop ringing about having a copy of their tax bill, or something sent to their attorney, or so forth, but basically, it's just standard operating procedure, what we're doing every year. And we do have that election coming up on March 3rd, and I just would like to have as many of you if possible, to help count, only because on the Democratic ballot, there are eight or nine names on there. So we want to have that listed, each name, and so forth. So basically, I hope to see that, and we can get that done. That's pretty much a dog license, we're selling it until April 1st. And March 14th, there will be a clinic up at the New Brook Firehouse at 10:00 AM for rabies vaccination in December.
Hey Guy, what time does, do the falls close?
7 o'clock.
So people here around then, if we can't be here during the day?
Right, yeah, I definitely need counters starting at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
I have it on my calendar. Cool, thanks, Guy. Oh, and I guess I should mention, though I'm, though, I'm putting it on the agenda for the next time, but the thanks guy for reaching out to VLCT about the whole strolling, what the.
Yeah, just to keep us, make sure that.
So he's gotten some information, and I'm going to reach out to our, Wade, the guy who's our boss controlling consultant, to try to get some, and I'm going to put it on the agenda to discuss next time, what we, how we want to approach that. Mark, what's going on with you?
Basically, I, first of all, I got a call from Archie Sander, salt supply, took a big hit over this last storm, and so I called this afternoon to reorder another truckload of salt, and hopefully, for Monday, after this storm drives up a little bit. And turns out, I was keeping a schedule date on the salt orders, we've basically been through about one load a month on salt. The last two loads are a little smaller than the first, but, you know, each load's been giving us about a month of good stuff.
Can I just ask on that, because I noticed that VLCT had sent out this email a few days ago about that Cargill was talking about if people were having trouble getting salt deliveries for any reason, they have plenty of salt and whatever, we haven't been having any issues.
No, not at all, but from everybody I've talked with, not that it's been a lot, everybody's getting salt on demand. Yeah, I've never received that, I got the email as well.
Yeah, it's kind of weird, I hadn't seen that before.
I've seen it before, so I don't know if more people switched.
Yeah, I, I assume that's when they're seeing, well, they've probably taken a hit, and so they're a little desperate on what's small, so.
Yeah, it has been a mild winter, so maybe some towns aren't using it as much, but, but yeah, it's good to know there's extra this year, whereas we've had years where it's been the other way.
I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's good to know. We also replenished some sand in the sheds. And one day in town, I, I came to check on roads, and I ended up helping into the Green Mountain Power representative again, and he's, he's actually moving a lot of poles for us to our, you know, it's going to help us out as far as creating better ditches and. he's, he's actually moving a lot of poles for us to our, you know, it's gonna help us out as far as creating better ditches and widening roads. And he told me of a couple new poles that he wanted me to check out. Each time he states out the new poles, they wanna make sure with the town that they're not gonna crowd roads and we're okay with it. We more or less work with the same right-of-ways, uh, maintain. He's got a couple of large trees down on Grassy Brook Road, which he wondered if I could help get permission from the landowners and being the tree wardens to work with, uh, him at their expense to remove these trees, which I feel are, uh, potential road hazards for the future, it, not just for the roads, but for, uh, the power lines coming in three to four different directions under them, so I told him I'd work with him on those. I'm also, again, making the plan, doing a, a tree recognition to build a contract service. I'll have it to tree recognition our right-of-ways. I'm also making up that sign order, which I started and keep adding to. I also would like to, uh, I'm starting to, I'm gonna see if I can connect with Archie before our next meeting, only because he's familiar with our paving, uh, situation and all the planning it takes to put our paving out to bid. And I'll have to do some measuring on the lengths and widths of where we wanna pave this summer, but we should probably think about getting those paving plans out for bid, um, sooner than later. Possibly, I'm thinking by the end of February.
Yeah, so that, um, yeah, let's talk about that, um, after, I mean, I have the, I have the templates for doing them. We probably just need to figure out the mileage.
All right, I'll, I'll.
And maybe just have a conversation with Archie about some of it.
Yeah.
And then we can, we can, we can at least have something, I can, I can put it in and we can at least have something to discuss on the 22nd.
That sounds good, yeah.
And potentially approve if worth.
I'll try and get those measurements before then. So I, I guess basically that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to communications, emails, um, as I mentioned before, um, Leanne Parker let me know that Sarah Wiswall emailed her a couple days ago to say that she was gonna step down from the meeting house committee. Nothing really more to that than that, I don't think. We've gotten, there's been back and forth with Marion Major and Ron Bell, you guys have seen some of it. I've kind of printed something out, although it's got really cut off from Ron's email, cause it's got all these attachments of the plan over and over again. That seems like it's progressing, maybe not quite as quickly as Marion would like, but she doesn't seem to be raising any red flags yet about anything. We got this email, which I'm not sure whether everyone would have gotten or not, but Guy and I talked about it before the meeting, that we'd received, um, maps to verify from the Census Bureau and Jeff Nugent at the Wyndham Regional Commission. They have found a number of mistakes in the mapping that the Census Bureau had done, so their suggestion for the moment, and I think we should heed that suggestion, is not to approve. Though Guy has gone through the maps and Guy is confident that the maps are in fact correct.
We're good, yeah, and I.
I think, I think we should hold off until the regional commission either says things have been adjusted or we may end up, we'll probably end up just approving what they've sent us anyway, but I think we should hold off, cause that's their suggestion for.
I, I, I believe there's two different surveys that we're talking about. That one came from the Census Bureau and I had an email that I replied to because it was due by the 28th of January and I did that survey and sent it in.
Yeah.
So, uh, then I got that email a couple of days later saying, don't do it. But at that point, I had already reviewed all the maps, everything, and I felt very confident with what we had for a thing, and I sent it in. This is a different, this is a different thing and I'm, uh, I'm gonna have to look at the email and see what it is. There's almost two different surveys, in fact.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I think I'm pretty confident that what Jeff is talking about is the, the census mapping verification that we received. So in any event, I think we'll heed the advice of our regional commission and hold off on approving any of it till they've been able to discuss more with them.
But they, they're reviewing, the regional commission, they'll be reviewing all towns within the region?
Yeah, that's what it says.
They're reviewing all of the mapping for all of the towns, because they found a number of discrepancies in boundaries, basically, is mostly what it is, but, you know. So, I would, they're, they have much more intimate knowledge of the actors, I mean, all of the maps, all the mapping that we have was produced by them.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll wait for their blessing or indication, we need to change something, I think, before we go any further. Um, and the only other email that we had, um, that, just to make people aware of, is following the audit. The auditors write a report, which goes in the town report, um, and they were confident in everything and they expressed everything. They, separate to that, have made some recommendations for the treasurer and CC'd us, so if you want to read some in-depth financial accounting, reporting recommendations, you can certainly do that.
How's the surplus?
Uh, fine, nothing changed.
23,000, really?
23, whatever it was, yeah, yeah, nothing changed. And I'll say that, I mean, all of the, and they, they noted in this, that they made suggestions, and this happens every year, but they make suggestions to the treasurer about how the treasurer might present things a little differently for their benefit, to make it easier for them to audit the books and to do it earlier, things like that, so, um, but they did include us in that. And I, we'll, you know, we're all happy to be past this period, but next year, we'll have to do it all over again. So that was it for emails. For printed communication, we have a postcard from VLCT about select board trainings that are happening after town meeting in March. And then we have something from the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, which is, um, about information about their, um, another round of funding that they received and, uh, period for project submission. That was all of the physical mail we had, and then we'll pass around the orders. While the pay orders are going around, let's just talk a little bit about agenda for next time. We'll talk about town meeting again, for whatever that might be. I'll probably have some kind of update about the broadband project. Like I said, we'll have on the agenda to talk about the strolling at a Heffers bike event and, um, what we wanna do about contacting them about that. We'll have road equipment purchase, next steps, continue that discussion. I will put on paving RFP, if we can get all of our stuff together to have at least a draft of an RFP that we can review and potentially vote on. Other things for the agenda for next time. I also wanna be cognizant again, it's gonna be a Friday night, so let's try to keep it.
Are we gonna re, did you organize this, I might not have heard you, so I was reading. Or are we gonna re-review, think about the VLCT later?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue the discussion of road equipment purchase, um, next steps.
And you're gonna send us a letter?
Whatever we decide.
I'm going to send, uh, that document that I had to Guy as the minutes of our meeting. So that will have the recommendation and any other information.
That's good enough.
Can I keep this, take a look at it more detailed?
Sure. I think that is an excellent idea.
It's a second half of the day, the meeting.
They would appreciate it, since they send that stuff and we've pretty much.
Well, I just, yeah, I'm just hoping to look into it a little more and see if there's anything that actually might benefit us.
Guy, the code three stuff?
Yes.
Does that have anything to do with the?
Those were some batteries that were down in the panel box downstairs and they also had to replace some batteries. Yes, here and also at the school, both. Yep.
Do you know how, you know how that's gonna?
There's two different invoices in there and I believe.
I think they got a different bar.
I'll do it for 100, $4 a hour.
I bet you would.
I'll do it for 100.
Here she is.
I know, cause I'm not even doing it.
I'm splitting a couple.
I know, I just wanna, I don't want your attention to be distracted when I make the motion, so whenever you're done.
Yeah, I'll take all of them. Those two, once for code three, cause they're probably down at the end.
Where we position is on the front, that's where it is on the.
There it is. Say, they didn't split it up based on, what was the school here? Doesn't say. Okay, I'll just assume that the town office is gonna pick up a couple of pages and all.
I think that's kind of funny, um, featuring, sent out that we're on the behalf of, uh, what you call them, the salt people. Yeah, I mean, I guess it, it does benefit towns if they use salt, but it's also kind of like, it seemed like it does move on their part, on, on the company's part to sell salt.
Yeah, well, and they even sort of say, whatever, we're not, I mean, whoever sends it has a sort of prefaced it by saying, I can't remember what they said, like, we're not, we're not making any other, yeah, we received the following email from Cargill, supply the word, so note that we do not have any other details. But wanted to share the information with the member towns, and so.
I believe most towns were saying, remember the country we did, uh, which was Eric and Rockville, and so they probably have another one in the.
Yeah, they probably, yeah.
I know they, if you've seen the, the salt pile in Rocky Hill, it's a man. And then they have another file in New York City, but your full chest will be long, so if their files not moving fast, they can put that through.
Okay, make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020-32 dated February 5th, 2020 in the amount of $1,406.09, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph, any discussion? Haring none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrants 2020-32 dated February 5th, 2020 in the amount of $1,406.09, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That's approved. Now I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrants 2020-31 dated February 4th, 2020 in the amount of $14,814.29, is there a second? Second by Shelby, any discussion? Haring none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrants 2020-31 dated February 4th, 2020 in the amount of $14,814.29, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Alright, those are both approved, we have set our agenda, I make a motion that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce, any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned at 7:58.